Called order the Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for May the fourteenth. And I recognize Ryan Mayberry for pledge of allegiance and myself for the invocation. And we will stand and pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and for its blessings you bestow upon us. Where I pray special protection across our county for our citizens and for our county employees, protect them each day. Also pray you protect our EMS, EMT, all the ones that keep us safe, fire department, sheriff, rescue squad, police, and highway patrol that put their lives on the line for us each day. Would you just take care and protect them? Guide us through this meeting, we'll make wise decisions that will move Alexander County forward. And we'll give you all the praise and thanks for it. In your name I pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I entertain a motion to accept our adoption of agenda. I'm sure everyone's had a chance to look over it.
So moved.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion? Being none, I entertain a vote to approve, all with the raise of the right hand. Okay, carries unanimously, thank you. Any commissioner have a commissioner report? Everybody's been pretty busy. It seemed like a budget spell I've had going on, but we're gonna take care of that. And we'll move on into our public comment. Okay. Okay, excuse me, got that. Got a special recognition of Tommy Pennell and recognize Jeff Peel, commissioner to do that. Mr. Pennell, if you'd come forward.
It's with utmost honor that I get to make a presentation. Read here what it says. Says Tommy Pennell started with Alexander County EMS in April of 1988. Think what you were doing in April of 1988. During this time, Mr. Pennell has held multiple positions to include paramedic, assistant supervisor, and he finished up his career as D-shift supervisor. He's helped mold employees and students throughout his career at Alexander County EMS. In his time off, he has previously volunteered multiple years with the Wittenburg Fire Department and Alexander County Rescue Squad and EMS. During his retirement, he plans on spending time with his wife Sissy, sons Travis and Heath, stepdaughter Allison, and his two four-legged kids, their German shepherds Bear and Keakley. They reside in the Sugarloaf community and have planned to trip up north to celebrate his retirement. And I'd like to read here what our plaque says. Says the Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby presents this key to the county upon Tommy Pennell for thirty years of dedicated service with Alexander County EMS presented May fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And if we have anyone who wants just to come get pictures, that would be very appropriate at this time.
Yeah. You can give us a little speech if you like, you know.
I don't.
Yeah, that'd be good, you know.
It's embarrassing.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your service, Mr. Pennell.
Thank you.
Being no one for public comment, we'll recognize this time, Mr. Ben Hines, if you'll come up and do your presentation. And also today is Mr. Hines' birthday, so we wanna congratulate you on birthday.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I come before you tonight seeking a completion of the flagpoles that sits to our, well, adjacent to the county office building. What I'm trying to do is finish the project. It's been about five years we've been working on it. And we've come so far, we've got three flagpoles out there right now, flying our American flag, North Carolina, Alexander County. And it gives you a good bit of pride when you go by there and seeing them fly. And what I'm trying to do is finish the job by creating something at the base of the flag, something similar, well, on the courthouse lawn, the flagpoles there, the three of them have a base to it. And we've been on that base many times. Something similar to that. I'm seeking guidance from our county engineer, Mr. French, our county maintenance, to go with this and get it finished by November the eleventh, which is gonna be on a Sunday. And what I'd like to see it happen is that we complete that job and be able to dedicate it from the American Legion Post one seventy to the county of Alexander. And I just think that it would give us all great pride, is the people go up and down Highway sixteen, and they look over the flags, and they'd be there with some nice arrangement at the bottom, lighted with electrical power. And they've got, right now, they've got solar, but that's not very bright out there. But the ones on the courthouse lawn are nice and bright, and you can't help but have pride when you look on the courthouse and see those flags flying by night. So anyway, I'm coming before you to come up with a design, something at the base, and I have some idea, and I put something into the, your brochures. It's like a bench that would be permanently anchored. And whatever we do out there, do it with the thought in mind that it would be maintenance-free so it can sit out there, not having to do anything to it. But it'd be well-maintained by just its appearance. Or we might have to come by, pressure wash it sometime, but as a rule, it would pretty much stand on its own. And I come before you for that request, that we get the approval, support, to get the job done by November the eleventh on Veterans Day, and we have a dedication at that time. Is there any questions at this time?
Any question from any commissioner?
No, I'll just ask Mr. French something. Do we have anything as far as a preliminary design, other than what Mr. Hines just?
He gave us a, and we're working on refining that.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Hines, I think it's a beautiful project. The part that kinda concerns me a little bit is the keeping people off of it. The cars and parking and the Friday night traffic, how you propose we do that?
It's more the purposes of having some structure there, so whereby that whenever they're observing the fireworks on the Fourth of July in that timeframe, that they don't back into the polls out there right now. This is more of a safety, also it's to give us all pride as we look out across the grounds. And the reason for all of this is it all started, like I said, about five years ago. We didn't have an American flag out at the county office building at that time. I think it's one that you could put on the wall. But I brought it up one night at the American Legion meeting. Little did I know that it's gonna sign me and two other members to the project. So anyway, we've come a good ways. Had one flag up for a while, then we brought two more on the seventeenth, I think it was, last year. So our maintenance, directed by Mr. Mitchell, Josh Mitchell, did a great job out there in the landscaping of what he's done. And he also got the lights on, the solar lights, and that's good. But it's not good enough. We needed a little bit of face lifting at the base to make it look pretty. So the people that go up and down sixteen can see and look over there with pride. We can look with pride because it is our America, North Carolina and Alexander County. They need to know that we're the gem county of this state, and that'll help us a little bit.
I appreciate that. We'll get together with Mr. French, and if you got with Mr. Mitchell, so far, we'll put something together, and then I guess Mr. French will be in touch with you and...
But thank you so much for letting me come before. It'd just be nice to have it be done.
All right, we'll try to shoot for that tee date, but Mr. French will be in touch with you too. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hines.
Thank you, Mr. Hines, and happy birthday.
Moving on to item number two, I recognize Doug Gillespie for EMS Week proclamation.
Thank you for your time. I'm here for requesting for May twentieth, let me get the date right, May twentieth through May twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, for National EMS Week Proclamation. I'll just read it real quick. Whereas emergency medical service is a vital public service and whereas the members of the emergency medical service team are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, whereas the emergency medical service consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. The members of the emergency medical service team, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their life-saving skills. Whereas it is inappropriate to recognize the values and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by Designated Emergency Medical Service Week. And it's now therefore, I, Ronnie Reese, Chairman of Alexander County Board of Commissioners, Taylorsville, North Carolina, in recognition of this event, to hereby proclaim the week of May twentieth through the twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, as Emergency Medical Service Week, with the theme EMS Strong is Stronger Together. And it's I encourage the community to observe the week with appropriate programs, ceremony, and activities adopted this day, fourteenth, day of May, two thousand and eighteen, with Clerk of the Board, Jamie Starnes, and Ronnie Reese, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. I entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion, we approve as read.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Appreciate what y'all do. Moving on to item number three. Sure everyone's ready for this, the new McDonald's opening. Recognize John Link. And is there anyone else with you, your...
If you can, the marketing, my right arm with me. So, my name's John Link. I was born in North Carolina. I was pretty much born at McDonald's. It was my first job, a dollar twenty-five an hour. And how many of you remember your first McDonald's? You know, it was probably, there was probably Tunnel Road, Independence Boulevard, over in Winston. Well, I used to ride my bike to McDonald's when I was a kid, and it was always a dream to work there, 'cause the french fries were so dang good. Well, finally, after two applications, I got hired on. I never dreamed I'd be here. Forty-eight years later, still flipping burgers. But I love it, and it was a dream to own a McDonald's. And about twelve years ago, I had the gentleman I was working with over in Hickory, I was his director. He decided he was going to start selling out, so I was smart enough to do a deal with him, and I bought my first McDonald's. Within a year, I'd made enough money to buy my next McDonald's. And over progression, I was up to eight. Well, about last October, me and John Harrell, who was the proprietor here before I am, had been talking, he wanted to retire, and McDonald's was really putting the heat on us to remodel the restaurants and rebuild them. And this store here in town was tired, and it was old, and it needed a lot of work. So I took it on as an opportunity to challenge, and I brought in one of your, Alexander County's heroes in McDonaldland, Sheila James, and her husband's the police chief, to be the general manager. She ran my store in Lenore. She is an awesome person, she is in the top one percent of general managers for McDonald's Corporation. And she's got that honor twice. So it was a sacrifice to bring her home, but she assures me she's gonna make this thing be the best restaurant that ever hit this town. So February eleventh, I bought it in October, tore it down February eleventh, and we're gonna open Thursday with a bang, and hopefully I can break some records. When we opened Lenore, Lenore wasn't on the map in McDonaldland, it is now. Even in Chicago, they talk about McDonald's down here. And so through the years, I've grown with my business and do things for the corporate headquarters in marketing and food. So I am the chicken lead for the U.S. And you know, this is chicken country, and I'm pretty passionate about making sure we got the best chicken. So I'm testing in two restaurants right now, new chicken, a new cooking process on three-twenty-one in Lenore, and I convinced Chicago to let me put that chicken in Taylorsville. Because you guys have been without McDonald's food for a couple months now, so I wanna blow the chicken roof off. And you know what else is interesting? Where do you think that chicken is, comes from? All of it, most of the chicken we sell in our restaurants comes from right around this area, over in Wilkes-Barre, Tyson Foods. That's pretty cool, you know, the food. And how many jobs are created because of the chicken? And actually, you don't see dark meat, right, anymore? That goes to, we export it to China, and they're buying our dark meat. But it's pretty cool how many jobs. Coffee, the coffee that we sell in our restaurants, and the iced tea we sell, is all roasted and processed over in Concord. Thousands more jobs. The iced tea we sell, all of it is processed in Concord for the whole United States, seventeen thousand restaurants. So North Carolina is a pretty big site for McDonald's. And you know, I get visitors flying in from Chicago, you can ask Kathy, almost weekly, to come see in what we're working on with chicken and see what we're doing. So I'm glad to add Taylorsville and hopefully put Taylorsville on the map. When you go to meetings in Chicago, and there's all these owners, and they start talking about the McDonald's in North Carolina, it's a pretty big honor. Sheila, the James, the manager's hired about eighty employees. I'd like to get over, we're gonna have over a hundred by the time we unlock those doors. I opened Lenore with a hundred and seventy-five employees. Hard to believe in a fast food restaurant. But I hire a lot of people, 'cause I'm gonna do a lot of business.
There you go.
And if you look at that drive-thru, put two lanes all the way to the road. So we got the capacity to make that thing rock. It's got all the latest McDonald's features with technology, so the mobile order and pay. You can come through and place your order on your phone before you even get to the restaurant. So if you're a mom, you're busy, and you want, you got three kids, and somebody wants a Happy Meal with no onions on their cheeseburger, you can put that in your order. When it gets to the restaurant, there's a beacon that will pick up your, on that parking lot. It's gonna ask you back, it says, do you wanna come inside, dine inside? Do you wanna go through the drive-thru, or do you wanna park curb-side? You won't even have to get out of your car or talk to anyone, because the order will go right to our kitchen screen, and we'll deliver the food to you, hit your credit card. So it's phenomenal how far technologies come. When you walk in the restaurant, we got order kiosk. So a lot of people, when they walk in the restaurant, they spaz out, and they forget all, with our menu, with a couple thousand items, it seems these days, you know, you're pushing these buttons. Now we got these big iPads. You can push the iPad and fix the sandwich like you want. And a lot of people, when I put it in Lenore, I started up there, consumers were thinking, we're getting rid of people and getting rid of jobs. I wish it was that easy. But I just added four more order points in my dining room, and it takes more people in the kitchen. So you know, I know a lot of people are afraid of technology, but we got pictures. You don't even know how to, have to know how to read to order a Big Mac, you just look at the picture. And I will have guest experience leads in our dining room showing you how to use it. But that store's gonna have three windows when you go by the restaurant. The first one you'll pay, second one your food, and if there was some delay in preparing your special sandwich, you can go to the third window. So that restaurant's got all the greatest features that I could put in it, bells and whistles, 'cause I like to be on cutting edge. The dining room, it's different, totally very contemporary, and when we rebuilt the restaurant, McDonald's, I didn't own it, McDonald's wouldn't let me build this monster restaurant like I stuck in Lenore. Lenore has the biggest restaurant in North Carolina, 'cause I shoot big. So I fought with McDonald's to put a bigger restaurant on there. I couldn't win, 'cause it, you know, they're partnering with me. But I did get them to move the building back, so if they come, I'm gonna blow the front end off that store in a few years and make it bigger. But I'm proud to be to this, working in this county, and I'll tell you what, it was, has been wonderful working with everyone in this county in cooperation with the building of that restaurant, that we had zero problems. I can't say that everywhere. I own the restaurants in Concord, Conover, Hickory, and Lenore, and now Taylorsville. But I'm excited to be here. We got a lot of things going on on Thursday. Tomorrow night, we got a VIP party going on. I think most of y'all got invites, I hope. And what we're gonna do is do our food story. Our food that we sell in our restaurants is not loaded down with preservatives and flavorings. It is real food. And so I've got recipes that we've used in prior openings, plus I got two corporate chefs that flew in this afternoon, and we're gonna prepare you gourmet food using McDonald's ingredients. It's pretty dang cool. So I'm excited for you to come out and see the restaurant, go inside behind the scenes, and see the technology that we use to run those restaurants. Any questions?
I'll say, you asked which McDonald's, was the first McDonald's we'd ever eaten at? I believe this one here in Taylorsville was the first one I had ever eaten at, yeah. So my dad actually helped build that restaurant, what, thirty-five years ago, thirty-seven? Has it been there?
I think it was eighty-four, wasn't it?
Maybe it was, maybe it was. So it was, it was when I was a kid.
Yeah.
But I remember when it was done, it was, you know, we had a McDonald's.
Yeah.
It was huge, especially for us kids.
The restaurant that I started working in when I was a kid is on its third building now. And so I started, it was red and white. I don't know if anybody knows what a red and white is. It's where we didn't even have dining rooms. That was before breakfast, before we started hiring women. Now we hired women, and we called them the lunch ladies, they just worked eleven or two. Now women are a major portion of our workforce, and they do a great job for us. But we've come a long way, and it's interesting, when I started, we had fresh meat delivered every day. So we've just gone back to using fresh meat quarter-pounders, and our delivery comes every three days. French fries, back in the days, we had to, I had to peel potatoes and slice them. But we could never do the volume we do today if we had to peel potatoes again. So we're gonna stay with the fries. But the fries are good because of our supply chain. Those potatoes that we sell five days ago were in, they're grown in the upper northwest of the U.S. And they keep them in bunkers. We can hold potatoes for up to a year. And then when, based on demand, the orders come in, they slice, they send them over to our plant, they process them, they go in rail cars all the way across the U.S. They come to Lexington, South Carolina, delivered to our plant, go in one door and go out the back. We get probably seventy-five to a hundred cases of french fries every three days. Our groceries turn that fast. And because of that, we don't need to keep all these preservatives and artificial flavors in the thing. So we're going back and cranking back our recipes to original recipe. It's pretty neat how far we've come. But hopefully, you know, we'll probably have a few hiccups there, and I know the traffic's gonna be crazy out there, but we're preparing for it, and hopefully you'll have a great experience when you come to the restaurant.
Is the restaurant designed the same as the one on Springs Road?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's...
Yep, that's the new building.
Yeah, very laid back.
Yeah, same size building too.
Okay.
Just change, the dining room's different. And the decor, I'll just say it's modern, it's unique, and I didn't pick the wall graphics. Nowadays, in order us to build these restaurants as fast as we do, you have packages you pick. And on some of the restaurants in town, I got to pick colors and things I like, but it's come together over there, but it's a neat experience, and I hope you'll reach out and come see us. Hope to put Taylorsville on the map in the McDonald's world too.
That'd be great. We look forward to it.
I could talk about it all day, so ask me anything.
How many restaurants do you have now?
Nine.
Nine?
About seven-hundred-and-fifty employees.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's a lot to keep up with.
And there's always something going on in those restaurants.
Looking forward to coming tomorrow, and appreciate you getting us back on the map here and...
Thanks for your investment.
Getting the burgers.
Well, thank you.
It's Thursday.
Thursday's opening day, but I'm looking forward to it. Unfortunately, I gotta go to Chicago Saturday afternoon to work on menu again a little bit next week, but I'll be back around. And my son's in the business, he's in second gen program, and he kinda started his career at McDonald's when he was younger. And he went off to be a meteorologist for a couple years, and that, those hours as a meteorologist, getting up at three in the morning and then split shifts in frost seasons, he said he'd rather sell hamburgers. So he's been back with me five years, and he's in the program to become an owner himself. And so it'll stay in the Link family. I got a great organization of managers with quite a few years with me as well. And we will be involved with the community for the first week. For anyone that uses our order kiosks in the dining room, I'm gonna donate twenty-five cent to the Alexander High School Band, marching band, for them to do what's they need. Anything else?
We appreciate again what you're doing and keeping jobs in Alexander County, that's what, as a board, we've been about a lot. So it's a nice building, I've been by there, so...
Yeah, they've done a nice job, and I want that corner to be the prettiest corner in town.
All right, thank you, sir. And we'll be seeing you around, so thanks a lot. Moving on to item number four, CDBG Award grand announcement, Stony Point Elementary, recognize Gary Herman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Link's about as excited as our citizens, so it's good to see such enthusiasm in a business owner. He is passionate, so thank you for your investment in our community on behalf of the county and the EDC. So I'm here tonight to announce that Alexander County has received a Community Development Block Grant for Infrastructure. This comes from the State Water Infrastructure Authority, and it's going to be to extend wastewater service to Stony Point Elementary School. The grant totals eight-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Also, Alexander County has committed eighty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty to the project, bringing the total project cost to nine-hundred-and-eighty-four... bringing the total project cost to nine hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. So this is a big deal down in Stony Point to get wastewater service to this elementary school. So you're saying, what does the nine hundred and eighty-four thousand pay for? Well, that includes constructing a pump station, installing twenty-nine hundred linear feet of a four-inch force main, six hundred linear feet of gravity line, and abandoning the two existing septic systems at the school. And so basically, I think you may have a map in your packet. It'll kinda show the layout, but they're starting a pump station right now near Sure Tape Technologies as part of the ongoing project there. So it'll go from there, across Ninety, Stony Point School Road, and then connect to the school there. And as I alluded to, this project is possible because of the Sure Tape Sewer Project, which extended sewer service from downtown Hidnite down Highway Ninety to Sure Tape Technologies in Stony Point, which helped us retain some jobs at that factory. The county received significant grant funding for the Sure Tape Project from the Golden Leaf Foundation and also the Appalachian Regional Commission. This CDBGI funding for the school sewer project will be used to benefit low-to-moderate income people in Stony Point. That was one of the criteria. Also, I'd like to say a big thanks to Sherry Long with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. They do such a wonderful job in obtaining grants for Alexander County. They always go to bat for us and seem like we have a lot of success with them and they've really done some good work for us. And we always appreciate their hard work. And the COG will be administering this grant for Alexander County. And we anticipate the project will get underway later this year, probably around the fall, I think Mr. French said. Any questions?
Gary, I'd just, for the public to know what kind of stuff you have to deal with when you're dealing with these grants. I'd like for you to read that bottom part of that letter of all the federal procurement regulations. You don't have that?
Well, I've got the Davis Bacon.
Yeah, 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 that.
Yeah. There's a lot of administration things they have to go through, all the hoops and...
Read that off, just so people...
I don't think I have...
Okay, I'll read it off.
If you have it, go...
Alexander County will be required to adhere to the federal procurement requirements and other federal... Sorry, I got a little cold. And other federal regulations which include American with Disabilities Act, Section 504 survey, the Davis Bacon and Related Labor Acts, the adoption and submittal of a citizen's participation plan, the adoption and submittal of an equal opportunity plan, the adoption and submittal of a fair housing plan, the adoption and submittal of a language access plan, the adoption and submittal of a relocation assistance plan, the adoption and submittal of a Section Three plan, the excess force provision, and I'm sure there's other things that we're gonna fall under to there. So those are all the federal regulations that go into things like this when you get a grant. So it's a lot for our people to keep up with and a lot of hoops to jump through.
We're so thankful for the COG.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Member.
Appreciate it, Gary. Thank you for the work you've done on this, too.
Thank you, Ron.
Glad to get that awarded and also that gets it under the railroad, so that was a little bit of an obstacle, too, so.
It's good news for the county and for the school system.
That's right. Any other question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five. ABC Store feasibility study PowerPoint update. I'd recognize Crystal Morpheus, CCD founder and CEO. And Judy Kay Wood from the ABC Study Committee.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I represent the Alexander County ABC Feasibility Study Committee that was formed by the Commissioners after the referendum passed approving the sale of beer, wine, and sale of alcohol through an ABC store. The feasibility committee was tasked with studying if the county could financially support an ABC store outside of the existing store in Taylorsville. Our committee met with Lori Lee, who is with the North Carolina Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission. She recommended that we work with a consultant to do study of the county. And if the data showed that we could financially support another store, then consider merging with an existing ABC board. With approval of the Commissioners, the feasibility committee contracted with Crystal Morpheus. Crystal is a certified economic developer and CEO and founder of Creative Economic Development Consulting in Elkin. We commissioned Crystal to do a feasibility study of Alexander County and specifically the Bethlehem community. Ms. Morpheus's study will support the recommendation that the feasibility committee, from the feasibility committee, that the Commissioners open a dialogue with adjoining counties to merge with an existing ABC board for the purpose of opening an ABC store in Bethlehem. So I'll turn it over to Crystal.
Thank you. Do I have a clicker or are you my clicker?
He's back there.
He's back there.
You can't see him.
Okay, I'll just say next slide. He can hear me there, okay, good. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, staff, I'm pleased to be in front of you this evening to deliver the results of the feasibility study. Our charge was to gather ABC store data from various stores. And we'll talk about those stores and the results of that research. Also, to benchmark Alexander County with a group of peer communities. And with the help of David Eisenhower and Mr. French, we were able to identify some similar communities for that benchmarking process. We examined retail leakage, the leakage of alcohol sales as well to determine the market. And we did additional research in one, three, and five mile radii around the Bethlehem community. So we first took a look at all of Alexander County and then we were asked specifically to look at the Bethlehem community. So when I talk about that community's data, oftentimes it's averaged. If you've read through the report and there's just one number, it's average. Sometimes we do give the data for each of those one, three, and five mile radius from an intersection in the middle of the community. So you have the full report, but I'll give you the highlights. Next slide. I'll go over some benchmark data. This is with the peer community group, just to see how your community is growing and changing compared to those communities. Next slide. You'll see two charts here. On the left is overall population growth and projected growth of Alexander County. And we compare the county to Davie County, to Ash County, and to McDowell County. They're similar in population, they're similar in economy, proximity to larger communities, and have ABC stores as well. And one of the things we noted here is that Alexander County has had slow population growth. You're actually projected to lose population or at least have no growth going forward into 2022. And so that was a flag to us. But when we look specifically at the Bethlehem area, it has experienced population growth steadily and it is projected to continue to grow. So even though the county's population growth has been slow and maybe will stall a little bit, that area of the county is growing pretty quickly. And you'll see the population change on the right-hand side in that graph. And you'll see that Alexander County's about in the middle of the benchmark group. Next slide. We looked at several measures of income. Alexander County's in the mid-range of income of our comparable group, but actually it's projected to grow. And that's probably because of the larger income in the Bethlehem area. We think it may carry the county in terms of income growth. And if you just look at that chart in per capita income or median household income, we couldn't get mean income for the radii because it's not actually a defined municipality. We looked at radius of an intersection. But if you look at the other income levels, they're significantly higher than the county income. So the population's growing faster there, incomes are at a higher level. And of course, that impacts overall purchasing power and retail sales. Next slide. This is age. Age is important. The main retail market for alcohol, beer, wine sales in general is the younger age group. And you will see that Alexander County has a lower-than-average median age, which was a real positive. We see oftentimes aging populations, especially in rural communities. But yours is actually looking pretty good compared to other rural areas. Next slide. Retail sales are growing in the county. That's on the left-hand side. There's an upward tick in retail taxable sales. And on the right-hand side is Alexander County compared to others. So even though retail sales have been growing, the overall market here is smaller when we compared it to the benchmark group. But when we get to actual retail leakage, the Bethlehem area really stands out as a powerful and growing marketplace. What this told us is that, yes, the county's sales are growing, but it's still a relatively small market compared to other benchmark groups. Okay, I'll go on to the alcohol market data. This data we pulled from retail leakage and really is the crux of the market feasibility. On the left-hand side, you will see the total amount spent on alcoholic beverages in this county as opposed to the benchmark group. And you see it's about mid-range. But if you look to the right, we were able to gather data in the Bethlehem area on the amount, average amount spent on alcoholic beverages per household. So you'll see that Bethlehem stands out significantly above the county as well as the other benchmark counties. So whereas we saw Alexander County as a whole being a relatively small market, maybe not as much potential, when we look specifically at the Bethlehem area, there is a higher-than-average amount spent on alcoholic beverages there. So it told us there's a stronger market concentrated in that area versus the entire county.
How do you get that? How do you, how do you determine that sales?
That data?
Yes, ma'am.
It comes from a private data source called ESRI. Those in the county planning department probably know ESRI for GIS planning data. They actually pull it from consumer spending surveys from the federal government. And then they make projections for the local area. So with ESRI data, we can pull it on a municipality, a county level, or any radii around any intersection point, but that's a private data source. But it's based on the consumer spending patterns of the federal government reports.
I'm not sure I follow that. So it's a projected, it's not based off of a real sale?
That, well, sort of. So the federal government would gather data on Alexander County. And so it has data on Alexander County, on Catawba County. And so for Bethlehem, where they have to drop a pin and do a radii, it's an estimation in that area based on sales from the county data, if that makes more sense.
Based on sales from the, from sales tax or...
Yes, yes.
So, and I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand. It's based off of a number of total sales, then not necessarily alcohol sales?
This is based off of alcohol sales, like consumer spending patterns. And that's through, like, the US government will survey citizens about spending patterns. So this particular one is based off of that consumer spending index pattern. If it helps with you, if it helps, I can follow up with more detail on the data sources and the exact reports that they're using from the federal government, if that would be helpful to you.
Yeah, well, I'm just curious how you determine what was spent on alcohol versus peanut butter?
Yeah, so once we get...
Can I say, can I say just one rule? This doesn't do anything, but just to let everybody know, if you didn't know, that VIT card or that MVP card or that Lowe's Foods discount card, that's not just to get you better prices. If you've never read Book 1984, it's a good time to start, because it started way before now.
So in the full report, there's a retail leakage that actually breaks out retail's demand and supply by many different categories. And there's a footnote, should be a footnote there, or I can provide it to you, that has the specific reports where all that's pulled. They can tell you how much of a demand and supply there is in beauty care products, for example.
Thank you.
It's pretty interesting. Okay, the next slide is the actual spending potential index. It's just indexed between zero and one hundred, where they gauge the market potential for alcoholic beverages. And you'll see, again, that Bethlehem stands out, if the scale is one to a hundred, at the highest in the group. Alexander County, again, is about mid-range. But what this told us, again, is there is more opportunity for an ABC store in the Bethlehem area than the county as a whole. And then the final piece of the market data, this was the most telling, I think, for us in terms... This is that retail leakage report. We do the, the report, the full one for Alexander County is there, but we just pulled beer, wine, and liquor stores, which is one category they grouped together. And this shows us retail gap. So if you ever heard anyone ask about retail leakage, this is retail leakage, if you will. Alexander County only has about a $500,000 gap. And so if we're just looking at the county, that's probably not a sufficient gap overall in the county for another store. However, if you look at the Bethlehem one, three, and then five miles, at five mile, there's a $2 million gap, and that actually exceeds some revenue of stores in total. So the gap in the Bethlehem area exceeds some total store sales. That's a significant gap. Even at the three mile, that's still $1.4 million gap. This is the difference between the demand and the supply side and the gap, the retail gap that can be filled. Yes?
How do you determine that?
How do you determine that?
The demand, yes, ma'am.
So a data source like ESRI would say that in Alexander County, there are X number of people with X number of disposable income that would spend X amount on beer, wine, and liquor sales. That gives you the demand. It's an estimated demand. Then they say there are X amount of sales in the community, so the difference between the demand and the supply. I will say, for a community like Alexander County, Bethlehem, any small community, these are data projections and estimations and guides. These, some of this data would be actually from Department of Revenue reports. Stuff like this would be estimations, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Question, the three and five mile radius, I guess that builds an assumption that people from Catawba County will come across into Bethlehem to make a purchase versus going to Viewmont?
It does. So with a one- and three-mile radius of that intersection, it determines a market, a drive time. This is a mile, you can actually drive time radii around it. And it assumes people within that marketplace. But there are people outside of that five miles that possibly would come into that market as well, from other places, other areas.
Is there a way to, say, do a five-mile radius but not include all of that five-mile radius? Cut it off at the intersect, or the bridge there, Highway 127 Bridge? So that you're just taking in that part that's in Alexander County. Reason I say that is because I live there. And I just, anybody that lives in Bethlehem knows it's gonna be a very difficult thing to get people from Hickory to drive back across the bridge to Bethlehem, so.
How do you assume that, that it's gonna be difficult for you to bring people to drive to Bethlehem?
Well, just personal experience. You don't agree with that?
I don't either.
You don't? You think people from Viewmont are gonna drive?
I think people from Viewmont come to Evans Drug every day.
Really?
I think Evans Drug sold over half a million dollars worth of t-shirts last year. And they weren't all peaking Bethlehem.
Well, I think another thing is probably the Viewmont store is quite aged. And I'm assuming if you have a new store, at least unless they upgrade that store, you might attract that way. And it might be less stoplights coming back across the bridge if you're right across the line versus coming into Viewmont, less traffic, ease of ingress and egress, possibly.
Location-wise, as far as ingress and egress, definitely would be a plus.
To your question about doing a radii but taking part of the area out, I think there are some data programs that you can draw kind of a polygon or a certain area. I'm not sure if the one that we use does that, but I can look into that and suggest if our data source doesn't do that, then maybe another data source can. But I think that you can find one that will do that. I'm just not sure that ours does. Yes?
Is there any consideration in regards to the existing store that we have now? Which I think when the person was here from Raleigh concerned as we first discussed this, there was discussion of minimum size sales for a store really to be economically feasible. Is there any concern a store in Bethlehem pulls away from the existing store to where you have sales of Bethlehem of a million bucks, but then the other one goes down? Which, if I'm thinking about partnering with somebody, if it's the current partner that is in the Tuttlesville store, you know, that's something I would certainly have to rationalize, that I would not end up with too mediocre stores.
Yeah, I understand your question. It's a valid question. It's my understanding that the Viewmont store would be within a five-mile radius, because this is a five-mile-as-the-crow-flies radius. So that Viewmont store is within this five miles. And this data shows there's a $2 million gap with that store's activity already in the marketplace. So this would indicate that there is enough market above and beyond what's currently taking place within that five miles that would support another store.
I'd just venture to say that a lot of the business would come in that Hickory area and the Granite Falls area and back in. I don't, I think there'd be a ton of business there and from Caldwell and Catawba County and Bethlehem. there in, from Caldwell and Catawba County and Bethlehem, but I don't, I don't know that it really leaches back this way, probably, I wouldn't think.
What, is this something you can answer? So if there's a retail gap of $2 million already, why are, why is the Springs Road store and the highway, or the Viewmont store not, are they, are they pulling those numbers in and it's, I don't understand that. I don't understand what you're saying.
So from anecdotal, anecdotally, from discussions with the committee, the Viewmont store may be missing out on sales because of its age, access to it, so it may be missing sales. People may be going beyond the Viewmont store, out of that 5 miles somewhere else, in the Hickory area, for example. If they work in Hickory and commute, they may be dropping their dollars before they hit the Viewmont area or back into Bethlehem. And we've seen with the Taylorsville store, and I'll show you some of their data, they have been growing. It's been slow growth, but they have been growing. Let's go on to the, the store data. One more slide, there we go. So we compared stores, and let me say that the, the Taylorsville store is under the Catawba Board, we had to break that data out. McDowell County has a couple of stores where data's broken out. We had to actually interview people for this data, and we do have all the data, made it available to, to the EDC and the committee and the county. If you look at the Alexander County store, that's the blue bar that's on the left, and if you just follow it over time, and they say that store was under new management as of 2012, it seems slow but steady growth. So that's a positive sign to us, that it, that there has been growth, not substantial growth, but at least some steady growth for the Alexander County store. And if you look at the Viewmont store, it may have kind of tapped out a little bit. It's, again, grown a little bit over the last few years, but it doesn't have a lot of exponential growth. So just due to the smaller size and the structure of that store, they may have limited offerings, and may have limited access, and not be able to, to attract new customers, and so it's kind of flattened off a little bit. We get to other slides, you'll see that as well. The next slide shows a sales forecast into the future. If you look at ABC Commission reports, they do forecast into the future. And again, if you look at Alexander County, they're forecasting to continue to grow. That's another positive sign. And if you look at Viewmont, again, a little bit of growth, but it's kind of leveled off. And again, that could be to the small size of that store and its limited offerings and access, so it's kind of leveled off a little bit. The next slide shows, there's a couple of slides with cost, that's another thing that's reported to the ABC Commission. I'll just point out that Alexander County store has lower cost. The Viewmont store has lowered their cost as well. I think that says something about the level of management. And, and the mention early in the introduction from the committee about the possible merger with the, another board, and the Catawba Board manages both of those stores and has shown to be good stewards. And the next slide as well shows operating expense, and again, Viewmont has decreased operating expense, and Alexander County is one of the lowest in terms of operation. So, so this tells us that the stores are being operated well and doing pretty well in terms of management, so this was a positive for both of those stores. Yes?
And you may not know, I'm not sure, but how far away is the Granite Falls store? Is, how far out of that?
I don't know, it was not one that we studied. The committee members may know the distance.
It's on 321 on the...
It's on Easy Drive.
It's right there, falls out, and it falls out?
Yeah, capture a bunch of that market, too.
I mean, just because you see it every time you go up 321.
All the lake.
Okay, the next slide shows profits before distribution, and the Alexander County store's been generally increasing, a little bit down in 2016, '27, but profits, again, have been positive. And the next slide will show some percentages are over the board with some of them, but back up one more to the other side. And you'll see with Viewmont, the profits have been declining a little bit, so even though they've done a good job on the expense side, they've just not had the sales growth over time, and so profits have been declining. And the next slide is, is the percent of profit, and it's kind of all over the board with, with different stores, but you'll see Alexander County, again, is holding fairly steady, and we did not get this data for the Viewmont store. It was a piece of data that they just could not provide to us. And so I'll summarize and then answer hopefully good questions. So we looked at just Alexander County. The data was a little bit inconclusive, even though the store has been steadily growing, the management seems to be doing a good job there, profits have been, have been growing. It's been slow growth, but overall, the county's income levels are only mediocre, and population is expected to slow or maybe even decline over time. So it was a little bit inconclusive when we looked at the total county numbers, but when we look specifically at the Bethlehem area, the market is much different. The population is growing, income is high, it's expected to continue to grow. The retail market gap is significant in that area as opposed to the county as a whole. So our recommendation is that to move forward with planning for a second store in the Bethlehem area. You can start identifying a site location, doing some additional analysis for a future store, and continue to monitor this data. We have, data's reported every year to the ABC Commission, so you can get this public data as you go through your planning process to make sure nothing changes. We don't expect that it will. But again, just in summary, looking at the county as a whole, the growth picture was not as strong, but looking specifically at the Bethlehem area, income, population growth, and retail market gap, average spending, all of those things, spending potential index are all very high, especially compared to the others. So we would recommend that you start planning for a store in that area.
Do you have an idea how many, or how, what's the dollar amount of sales they would have to have per year or per day to support a store?
She said a million dollars. If you look at some of the, the store figures under gross sales, it really varies from a low of like $800,000 up to around $2 million in the Viewmont store. So you can see that some stores are not doing as well as others, but that million dollars does ring true with the, kind of the average of that group.
So the million dollars would come out of that $2 million leakage, pretty much, so...
Yeah, if you looked at the 3-mile radar, 3-mile radius, it was a $1.4 million leakage, and it's still a high spending, average spending per household.
They should justify that.
In that area, and that's, and that area has some projected transportation improvements and infrastructure improvements, and Hickory's just going to continue to grow, and that side of the county's going to capture that growth, and there's planned other developments in that area that have been discussed with the county. So there doesn't seem to be any slowing of the economic growth, and you're actually preparing for more growth with your infrastructure plans, so that's, this growth will at least maintain, if not excel.
Okay.
Other questions?
Any other question?
I'll be glad to follow up with some of the footnotes on the data sources, and I'll be glad to look to see if our data source or others do what's called just a polygon, which means you just do points and draw on a geographic area, to see if we can provide you some more information.
So regardless of, yeah, I think, I think it was good data. I mean, it's interesting, I mean, some, you know, I mean, I'm taking, I've taken, I looked at the report that we got, you know, earlier, it wasn't graphs, but it was, you know, and there are bits and pieces, bits and pieces of information that I pulled from it that were interesting to me, not only pertaining to, not only pertaining to possibility of an ABC store, but just how our community and our county and, you know, how, kind of how things, how things are, and the differences between this area and that area, and how we, you know, how we compare to other counties and how we compare to other things, so.
It's real interesting. I've worked in a lot of communities that are near metro areas. If you just take York County, South Carolina, and look how Rock Hill and Fort Mill have been growing, but if you look at Western York County, it's very different. I think sometimes we don't think of communities, small and rural, like Alexander County, of having multiple economies within your economy, but you really do, and you have that force kind of growing from the Hickory area that's really dynamically changing part of the county's economy, and it'll be very different, and the numbers will be very different. And I think this has been a good exercise, I think, for a lot of people involved in this work, that say that your community was trying to recruit a, another McDonald's, for example. If you just pulled county data for that McDonald's, maybe the market may not be as attractive than if you pulled a specific area for that market data, and it may make it more attractive to a restaurant or to another small business.
All right. A lot of good information. Any other question?
Well, thank you. We've enjoyed working with the committee and with your economic development staff and your county staff, and we'll be glad to follow up if you have any additional questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we need to vote to approve the study. Do I hear a motion to approve the study findings?
Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve the ABC store feasibility study provided by Creative Economic Development Consulting.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the board members? Shouldn't be none, I'd vote for, raise your right hand for approval. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item number six, we have a public hearing for the 2018, 2019 Alexander County proposed budget. Recognize Rick French for that, but we need to go into a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion if we go into public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. We're now in public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak, I guess after Mr. French goes through our budget, I'll be listening intently.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed general fund budget for Alexander County for fiscal year 2018, 2019 totals There is no proposed tax increase or no change in fees. There are no changes in fire tax, building fees, or other general fund fees. The fees for environmental health are currently under review. The original 2017, 2018 budget totaled $39,500,000. The revised budget for 2017, 2018, after budget amendments, to date, totals $42,593,784. One of the things that I noticed in reviewing property tax evaluations is that property valuations continue to decrease slightly in Alexander County since June 30, 2014, values have decreased $99,443,599 in comparison to June 30, 2017. The property valuations from Alexander County auto reports show in June 30, 2014, the values were $2,683,898,000, June of '17, $2,584,454,000. And as we have talked about some earlier, as most of you are aware, the Office of Budget and Management officially implemented its Uniform Administrative Requirements, Cost Principles, and Auto Requirements, commonly referred to as Uniform Guidance, in December of 2014. However, due to significant changes to the procurement requirements, there were part of, that were part of the new guidance, the Office of Budget and Management delayed the implementation of those procurement requirements. Local governments and public authorities that expend federal financial assistance, including USDA loans, grants, CDBG funds, FEMA public assistance disaster relief grants, and other programs, either directly funded or reimbursement-driven, must comply with these new requirements for all fiscal years beginning on or after December 26, 2017. And for us, it means the fiscal year starting July 1, 2018. I would like to say that also includes DSS funds, a lot of DSS funds, senior center funds, Medicaid funds, any pass-through funds from federal departments, for example, the US Department of Health and Human Services, US Department of Agriculture, US Department of Commerce, US Department of Justice, US Department of Transportation, and the US Department of Homeland Security. Also, ARC funds fall in that category. The UG, or Uniform Guidance, procurement requirements are complex, but the, but there are some critical points that units need to be aware of immediately. These points are applicability, includes loan and grants, lower dollar thresholds, written policies and procedures required, standards of conduct, conflict of interest, and gift ban, and entities subject to the rules. In addition, there are key elements of the Uniform Guidance standards that must be followed regardless of the method of procurement. The unit of government must use its own documented procedures. The unit of government must maintain oversight to ensure the contractors perform in accordance with the terms and conditions and specifications of their contracts or purchase orders. The unit of government must maintain written policies and procedures of conduct covering conflicts of interest. The units of government must avoid acquisition of unnecessary, unnecessary or duplicated items. The unit must maintain records sufficient to detail the history of procurement. All procurement transactions must be conducted in a manner that provides full and open competition consistent with the UG, or Uniform Guidance, procurement standards. The unit's contracts must include a number of provisions required under Uniform Guidance, including remedies, termination for cause and convenience, EEO requirements, worker and safety, and wage and hour requirements, Clean Air Act and Federal Water Pollution Control Act requirements, debarment and suspension, procurement of recovered materials, contract modifications, access to records, the Bird anti-lobby provisions, and other provisions that may be required by the federal granting agency. A good example of these was mentioned earlier by Commissioner Mayberry when we spoke about the CDBG grant for Stony Point Elementary School. It mentions in the letter we received from the state that the funds that we have been awarded are for construction, for service delivery costs. The administration line items of compliance, plan, preparation, environmental review, reporting, and the preliminary engineering report will all need to be paid out of local dollars. In addition, the ongoing administration that occurs during the course of the CDBG project, including the quarterly reports and David Spaken monitoring during the construction, must come out of local funds. Our engineering firm must be procured with the RFQ, Request for Qualifications, process. Procure these services, but do not sign a contract until the grant contract with us is executed. That letter is from the state, which is handling the federal money, and that's, but that's a good example of what's going to happen with these procurement guidelines. A copy of the North Carolina Department of Treasurer memorandum that outlines these guidelines is in your packet. Failure to follow the rules and regulations may lead to repayment of federal grant funds. And in conjunction with the Uniform, Uniform Guidance, beginning in fiscal year 2018, '19, the Secretary of DHHS has, will require all departments of social services to enter into a written agreement each year that specifies mandated performance requirements and administrative responsibilities with regard to all social service programs other than medical assistance. A copy of that draft agreement is in your 2018, 2019 budget book. On June 30, 2017, the unassigned fund balance was $10,205,052, or an over 28%. County commissioners should be commended for building a healthy fund balance. Our strong fund balance enables Alexander County to apply for a number of low-interest loans and many grants. Our strong fund balance also allows county commissioners to finance upfront costs for many projects. For example, the Alexander Applied, Alexander County Applied Technology Center, Community One Bank Project, or the $10 million in water and sewer project that will be scheduled late in 2019. Of the $41,200,000 proposed budget recommended in the general fund, a breakdown or highlights include $488,951 increase for Alexander County schools. That will take the number, their number to $6,520,851. $243,000 in capital outlay for four vehicles for the Sheriff's Department. $180,000 capital outlay for EMS for two remounted ambulances. $44,000 capital outlay for two replacement vehicles for DSS. $90,000 technology calls for DSS. $50,000 in DSS contingency funds for Medicaid, NC, HC overpayments. $193,400 for a 2.5% COLA for county employees effective January 2019. This will be the second COLA for county employees since 2010. $60,000... Sixty thousand dollars contract for four firefighter positions effective January 2019. Fifty-five thousand dollars for detention vehicle replacement. There are several employees included in the budget. Four full-time deputies, one of those is a narc officer. Those positions will start in January. Four quality assurance staff or DSS. Two new building inspectors, two communication employees, one public information EDC employee, one Uniform Guidance Compliance employee, one tax mapping revale position, which replaces a part-time employee, and one park maintenance employee. Health insurance costs with Medicare cost scales bar through the North Carolina League of Municipalities increased significantly as in its final year before agreements are rebid for next fiscal year. And a lot of this ties into the projects that are in process or in the works. And they are completion of the Sure-Tape Sewer Project. That project will soon be completed, which will allow us to move forward with the other project we discussed. Completion of the industrial sewer pump station. Community One Bank Project, and that contract has been awarded, that project has started. Water projects, LGC has approved low and some zero-interest loans, up to five million dollars. This project should be bid in 2019. The Bethlehem Sewer Projects, the North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure has approved the engineering report for five million dollars. And again, we received some low and some zero-interest loans. That project should also be bid in 2019. Sunny Point Elementary School Sewer Project, which we talked about earlier. The broadband project, we're working on an ARC grant from a feasibility study. We're also working on two Alexander County Duke Energy Recreation Projects. We're working on a long-term lease with Duke Energy, and that's still under discussion for Whittenburg Access. And staff is also discussing renewing or changing the lease at Dusty Ridge with party funds. The Sea of Hickory is proposing a 2.1% increase in water rates for 2018-2019. Water taps will increase to outside rates in July of 2018. Sewer rates will not increase in 2018-2019, but will be under review with the upcoming Bethlehem Sewer Project. As reported by the Sea of Hickory, in April of 2018, we have five thousand, one hundred and fifty-five water customers. We have two hundred and ninety-nine sewer customers in April of 2018. Tonight's public hearing on the 2018-2019 budget will conclude this part of the budget process, which began on January 24th, 2018. Adoption of the 2018-2019 budget ordinance is scheduled for June 4th, 2018. And I have a whole lot of information included in your packets. We had one bit of information submitted late to us, and that's in the back of your packet. And we have a number of other things, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions or if you want to move along with the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Whole lot of stuff there.
Yep.
Any questions? Well, I think everyone's had time to look and to see and check it out, like I say, this part of the budget. Kind of proposing it is where we're at. We've, I personally have met with a lot of the departments and some with other individuals. And we've tried to come up with a budget that kind of works for everybody. So I think we've got it going with what we can with the things that commissioners are, starting his projects. And as the lady with ABC study mentioned, those infrastructure things are what's bringing people in and helping us in the long run. So I think we've got a lot of good things going on. And the old adage, sometimes you've got to spend money to make some money and get things going. So in some departments, I'm sure everyone can tell, some are funded at a higher level. But the departments that are deserving of that, that's what we've tried to look at. And Mr. French has put some things together. So if there's no other questions, any questions from anyone in the audience? Mr. Campbell?
I just made a comment. You know how I feel about the COLA? Just not about allocating the funds, but just to COLA. I think a merit-based reward is much better. You give the money, pool it for whatever that represents, and then let the supervisors, who have some performance evaluations, employees, and they can reward accordingly. That's just a fundamental thing. You and I had that discussion. I just don't believe in it. Again, no problem with the amount, but I think this spending level pushes us to a limit. I won't be up here next year, but there's not much room to grow this thing. As you've heard, our real property revenue is flat at best. We've got our new sales tax. We're pretty much spending all of it. I find comfort in the fact that we budgeted the last three years, and typically, we budgeted our expenses higher and our revenues low, and we've been able to perform better than that. That's where you find some comfort. But we're about tapped out with this one. I just, you know, this is going to push us. I don't think there's going to be room next year. Of course, that'll be Smiles' decision. But I don't think there's going to be room for a lot of movement unless there's some significant change in revenue, which I don't, I mean, I think we'll grow a little bit in some areas. But, you know, I think our spending at this forty-one-two or this budget, quite frankly, maxes us out for some time. That's just my observation. So, I mean, I think if the increases came this year, I don't know. It'd be hard to envision that there would be significant increases in the future. Because I just don't think you're going to have the money for it. Just my two cents worth.
Well, and I'll throw in something too. When I was reading that list of federal requirements to those grants, we've got to add four people in DSS because of regulations that are coming down from the state. So that's four salaries. That includes taxes, workman's comp, general liabilities, not just the salaries. So it adds up, and that's that government oversight and regulation that costs money.
And that's just the DSS part.
That's just the DSS part.
Purchasing people and everything else.
Is part of the DSS, though, some of that state sponsors?
It is. Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. That helps, but still, yet they're mandating it. In essence, mandating it, but not funding it fully.
Mr. Chairman, the only comment I'd make about the budget. And I want to commend Chairman Reese for his work on this. I know a lot of people, it looks like we just, we run in here at the last minute, sit down, we've got a bunch of papers in front of us. We go over some stuff, and then we leave. And that is far from the truth as to what is required in this position. And like Mr. Campbell said, I will not be here next year. Because I have five small reasons that I need more time. And it's not, yes, I'm missing a seven, eight baseball game tonight and a PTO program to be here. But I'd hate to know how much time we've spent on the phone. And Ronnie's been on every one of those conversations, talking to me, talking to Milton, talking to each, you know, talking to Mr. French about all this, you know, well, do we need to meet again? Do we need to talk this out? Do we need to do this? Do we need to do that? What about this? What about that? And anyway, just want everybody to know that this is not something that is just thrown together in a very short amount of time. Like Commissioner Campbell said, I am not in favor at all of a COLA, which is cost-of-living adjustment. I am a hundred percent in favor of paying the employees of Alexander County more money, if they deserve it. And most of them do. I would say, you know, a very, very, very small percentage may not live up to full expectation. I don't know. I don't meet them. I don't see them on a daily basis. But I am very in favor of rewarding hard work and dedication and ingenuity. But I think, just like Chairman Campbell, when you've been in the private sector, you know, your entire career, versus being in the public sector your entire career. In the public sector, nobody can get a raise unless everybody gets a raise. In the private sector, only the best get raises. And there's a reason they get a raise, because they are worth more to their superiors than the others. And I hate to lay it out like that, but that's the way the real world works. And I saw a statistic not too long ago, sixty-three percent of America works for our government. Think about that. Federal, state, local, sixty-three percent of the American population works for the government. So we are becoming, we are very quickly becoming a very large group of people in the United States that where we all need to be, we all should be treated the same. Everything should be, everybody should get the same thing. Everybody should get the same raise. Everybody should get the same benefits. Everybody should get everything the same, because that's the way government sees it, and I don't agree with that. Other than, but like I say, I definitely agree that there are many, many, many employees in Alexander County that deserve to be paid way more than they're paid. Because there are a lot of very, very, very good, very dedicated people in the Alexander County government. But somehow, since this is a government, you know, since Alexander County is part of the public sector, the only way that we can manage to reward our deserving employees is to give everybody a cost-of-living adjustment, or, as we call it in the private sector, a raise. And I understand, it's called a cost-of-living adjustment. Well, in the real world, if you make one penny more than you did last year, it's a raise. It's not a cost-of-living adjustment. I don't get a cost-of-living adjustment. I don't know any business owner that gets a cost-of-living adjustment. If we made more money, we got a raise. So that being said, otherwise, I think there's been a lot of time put in and a lot of effort put in. And overall, I think, I think it's about as good as we can do.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say a couple of things. We have a bunch of amazing employees in Alexander County who are very loyal and who stay with us whenever the grass appears greener elsewhere, when the flight goes other places, that they stay. And to those people, I'm very thankful, and they're very deserving. And we're fortunate to have some really good folks. We're also fortunate to have the emergency management people that are into this budget, that have requested and have got some things. My goodness, it'd be wonderful to be able to give everything that we could, but we certainly have a limit on a checkbook like anyone else's. School system, same way, facing dire situation with decreasing enrollments, overregulation, lots of things. You know, and got to be a way to fill those gaps at some point in time. Don't know what or how. That's certainly not my budget to fix. But, you know, a lot of deserving hands reaching into the pocket, and the pocket's just not quite as big as we'd like for it to be. But we've tried to do what we can do. So thank you for all your work, and Mr. French, your work, and everyone who's participated and done things to get us to this point. But like Milton said, it pushes us. And without some unforeseen windfall, increases of such are probably not going to be seen for several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your comments. And it is, you know, we didn't honor everything. We couldn't honor everything. You have to look and see what you can do. And I appreciate Mr. French's work on it too, and everybody involved. So that's kind of what's being proposed. We will vote on that, I guess, at our next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other concerns or questions?
Well, I know there's a few additional personnel that we're adding on that badly needed. And I'm glad that the economy is in, you know, such a good shape. Like, we need more building inspectors, because building has picked up in Alexander County enough that we need that. So that's a good thing. I know we're adding on some more deputies, which the sheriff said he, you know, really, really needs. One of those is a narcotics officer. And I hope they're able to do something to, you know, possibly, you know. You walk around and you see some of these people, and you just know they are on drugs. And, you know, you feel bad for those kids. And we need to do what we can to make sure that the law enforcement has the tools that they need to, you know, get these people. And I don't want to say punish them, but, you know, sometimes it's a matter of catching them, and they get the help that they need then. And that helps as far as DSS, you know, keeping some of those people out of there. But I will say one more thing. I agree with Commissioner Campbell. This is, you know, I don't see this going much further than where we're at right now. So for the departments that, you know, are going to be looking for more and more money, it's probably not going to be there.
Yeah, that's true. I was kind of, I knew some of it, but with being and meeting with different places, it was amazing to me at what our safety, you know, Sheriff's Department, detention, the cost of training a person, and then, you know, if that person decides to leave, you know, that money's, you know, taken off as well. You know, we've mentioned, and she mentioned in the ABC study, the other counties. You know, there's no way, really, that Alexander County, that we can keep up with, you know, the Iredale, the Mecklenburg, those places, Catawba County. You know, just as mentioned here before, we're, you know, to the edge of our budget, really, just to maintain and to keep going. So, you know, I do appreciate all of the employees. I appreciate their desire to work here in Alexander County. And we appreciate, you know, what those employees are doing, whether it be the school, sheriff, you know, all of our employees. But, you know, you've got to realize kind of the budget that we're at and what we've got to look at. So, you know, everyone's going to have to, kind of, we communicated, I guess, for the last three years, since I've been on here, that, you know, we operate within our budget, and that's what we, you know, desire from everyone else. So we all work together, and, you know, I think this thing will work, and we can continue moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, let me clarify one thing that I said. When I say I'm not in favor of a cost-of-living adjustment, the reason I'm not in favor of that is because I believe good employees deserve more than 2.5% increase in what they make. But as a cost-of-living adjustment, and when you give every employee that same amount, it limits how much you can give the employees that department heads and managers feel like and know deserve much more than two and a half percent. And that's, I just didn't want, I didn't want, didn't want to be misunderstood or me to have conveyed the wrong thought, because I'm good at doing that and saying... the wrong, the wrong thought because I'm good at doing that and saying, saying things backwards. Because like they said, and this is not me, this is not me eating crow because I said this as part of my original rant, there are, there are, there are lots and lots of very deserving, wonderful employees in Alexander County. And I think we all wish that we could do more to, not only, not just to compete with other counties. Sure, we don't want to lose employees to other counties, but the biggest reason is we've got good people, is the good people deserve, honestly, they deserve more than we can give them. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Le. Okay. Any, anyone from the audience who wishes to? Being none, I entertain the motion that we close public hearing for our budget.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of closing the public hearing, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. French. And moving on to item number seven, we're still continuing on it. County sales tax revenue for 2017-2018 budget year. Recognize Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The regular sales tax for the county through April 2018 totals $3,612,2. That's 65, almost 66% of the budget collected. We budgeted $4,556,000 for the year for sales tax revenue. So we're, you know, right on schedule, just about. New sales tax, we've collected $965,307. We've collected 69% of the budget and our budget was $1,399,000. We are 4.1% ahead of last year's number, numbers for regular sales tax and a little over 7% for new sales tax ahead. Any questions?
Any questions from anyone? It looks like kind of about where we were.
Yeah.
You know, at least it is coming up, so that's good. Thank you for that information, Mr. French. Okay, moving on to item number eight. Recognize Mr. French again for board appointments and reappointments and farmland preservation B A D board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reappoint Tim Glass for three years, Eugene White for three years and Tracy Fox for four years.
Everyone's heard the appointments. I think most of those are familiar with those people. Anyone have a question about anyone?
Motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Being none, I'd entertain a vote, motion or a vote of approval with raising the right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. And moving on once again to item number 10, our county manager's report. Recognize county manager, Mr. Rick French.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing I'll mention. The North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure has completed its review of the engineering report for the Bethlehem Sewer Project and the division has determined that this project is eligible for funding per a letter that's in your packet. The rest of the items I have are for closed session, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. French. There's no further questions from the commissioners. I'd entertain, I'll break as a motion, we approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion about the consent agenda?
I just would like to say thanks for all the information from the detention center. We, you know, we, we get a real update on what's there and what's going on.
That's right.
I appreciate that.
Good information. Thank you, Mr. Thorne. And we'll vote to approve the consent agenda. Raise your right hand. All in favor? Motion carries. At this time, I'll, I'd make a motion that we go into adjournment for closed session per NCGS 14-3, 311811, 4, 5 and 6 for economic development, contractual and personal, and personnel. I'd entertain a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? All in favor? Vote by standing and we'll consider ourselves in closing, closed session. We'll reconvene only for the purpose of adjournment. Thank you.